And call to order the September 25th Port Orchard City Council regular meeting. And also remind us of our guiding principles and the actions we're about to take. Are we raising the bar in all of our actions? Are we honoring the past but not living in the past? Are we building positive connections with our community and outside partners? And is the decision-making process building a diverse, equitable, and inclusive community? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Chang's lonely over there tonight. We got Councilmember Rosa Pepe online and a couple of other folks out tonight. All right, we have a published agenda. Is any proposed amendments? You have one, Councilmember Trenary?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add item O to the consent agenda for the excusable Councilmember Deener for work-related obligation.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Trenary, a second by Councilmember Fenton to add a consent item O, the excusable Councilmember Deener for work-related reasons. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? None that has been added to the consent agenda. Are there any other proposed amendments to this evening's consent agenda? Yes, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Let's try to make sure I have the correct one here. I do. I'd like to take from the consent agenda and put to the business item E and... Is it H?
It's H.
H?
Is that the fundraiser?
Yeah.
That's the one I wanted to...
E is the purchase of the trucks, is that...
Yes, yes it is, yes it is.
Okay.
And then the fundraiser one, I apologize.
It's H.
H?
Mm-hmm.
An H, please.
Because that's the one I wanted to take off, too.
So H? And make those C and D on the business, is that what you're proposing?
Yes, please.
I'll second it.
Okay, so that's moving business. If I've got this correct, it's consent. Item E is now consent. Business item C and consent item H is now business item D. Did I get that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Wardent, a second by Councilmember Trenary, was that correct?
Just correct.
Okay. All in favor of moving those two items, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Those items have been moved. Any other proposed amendments this evening? Jake, can you hear us okay?
I did, I just said aye.
Okay, all right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Good council member.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Trenary, a second by Councilmember Fenton to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been set for tonight. We have our first citizen comment period. Is there anyone wishing to address the council? You have three minutes. If you could identify yourself when you get to the microphone.
Good afternoon or good evening, council members. My name is Jessica Gagoes White, and my daughters are fifth-generation Port Orchard, and our roots run deep here. And we are here to continue our quest to figure out how we can build a home on our property in an equitable way and in a fair way. We are homeowners at the parcel of 342-4014-020-2005. Water main fairness. The water main in front of our property was built in the 1950s. Our neighbors connected decades ago without ever paying frontage fees, but today, under a code adopted in 2021, we are being asked to pay nearly $30,000 in waterfrontage charges for the exact same line. This feels inequitable. Sewer main, double burden. On the sewer side, the main was installed just last year in 2024. It extends 58 feet into our property line. We are being told that not only must we pay a $28,000 fee for frontage, but also that we must engineer and pay to extend the line to the far edge of our property. That means we are being charged fees intended to fund systems extensions while also being required to build the extension ourselves. This is a double burden, and it does not feel fair or proportional. Washington law says assessments must be proportionate to the special benefit conferred. Our property is a single-family home with one connection, yet because of our long frontage, we are being charged as though we have nearly 240 feet of demand. That is not proportionate to the actual benefit we receive. My property is only 100 feet wide. It is .55 acres. We are not here to just object, we want to be constructive. We respectively propose alternates such as capping frontage charges for single-family parcels at 100 feet maximum. Using a flat per-connection fee plus a smaller frontage fee, for instance, $10,000 for the frontage fee plus $25 a foot. Exempting older mains built before 2021 from new frontage charges, or providing credits when homeowners must pay to extend the main themselves. Our ask is that we simply are allowed to connect to the sewer line that already extends into our property without being required to extend it further, and to have our frontage fees adjusted to reflect fairness and actual use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, were you able to connect with these folks?
There was a couple missed opportunities. We did talk, we have exchanged cards. Phone didn't work out so well, so I apologize, but we're still working on it.
All right, thank you.
I'm Joseph White. I'm here also to talk about the connection fees. And we have also, there's the water line that's already in place. In connecting to the water line is a fee that totals over $56,000 for our family. And for a single-family home, that amount is quite a lot. It is more than many families in our neighborhood have paid for their entire infrastructure connection. We do support contributing our fair share to the community, but under this formula, when the water line has been placed since the 1950s, it creates an inequity between our family and our neighbors. It feels like we are being penalized simply because of the way that our lot is shaped and not because of a greater use of the system. And I've heard that there are other approaches being used by some cities in Washington, such as caps or per-connection fees, or credits for owner-built improvements. And these kinds of solutions are practical, legal, and more equitable. We're not trying to avoid paying our fair share here. We are just asking that the city allow us to connecting to the, as far as the sewer, the existing 58 feet of sewer that was put in there in the sunset without extending it to the rest of the property, along the length of the rest of the property. And to reconsider our frontage fees under a fair formula that reflects the actual benefit to our property. So, we do want to pay our fair share, but we are asking for some fairness in return. Please help us find a solution that reflects proportionality, equity, and common sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any one else wishing to address the council this evening?
Hi, I am Toni Cowan, and I run a group on Facebook, Port Orchard Politics. So, I didn't get to meet the mayor last time, but hi, welcome back. Dear mayor and council, I'm concerned about recent campaign endorsements by the mayor and councilmember Deener and Trenary for Councilmember Rosa Pepe's reelection. While free speech is a right, endorsements among sitting officials create the appearance of a political team in City Hall eroding public trust. Here's why. RCW 4217A555 prohibits using public resources like city staff, offices, or social media for campaign purposes. Endorsements that seem to come from the city rather than individuals risk violating this law. RCW 42.23.070 forbids officials from using their position to grant special privileges. Endorsing a colleague with the weight of an elected title can appear as leveraging public office for campaign gain. RCW 42.36, appearance of fairness doctrine, requires impartiality in quasi-judicial roles like land use hearings. Councilmember Deener, who serves on the city land use committee and as Kitsap County's planning manager, creates a perception of bias by endorsing colleagues. This raises doubts about independent decision-making on zoning and permits. When talking to local union reps, Councilmember Rosa Pepe said, "The mayor has endorsed me, and that's all you need to know." Using endorsements as campaign centerpiece undermines the impartiality and suggests decisions may be influenced by political alliances. Ethics guidance urges keeping politics separate from government. Endorsements among officials may be legal privately, but suggest alliances that could sway votes or hearings. Why this matters? Residents need confidence that council decisions are based on facts, not campaign ties. Endorsements among colleagues erode that trust. What I'm asking is to adopt a rule barring endorsements of sitting officials using city titles or resources, require endorsements to be personal with clear disclaimers that they don't reflect the city's position, and encourage recusal in quasi-judicial hearings like land use when officials have endorsed one another. Our community deserves a council that prioritizes impartiality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the council this evening? All right, I will close the first citizen comment period. We are to our consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Chang?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended. Second...
Motion by Councilmember Chang, a second by Councilmember Trenary to approve the amended consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We have a number of presentations this evening, and the first is by our police chief. He has a citizens commendation. Or commendation, sorry. A condemnation.
Little bit different, yes, sir.
A little dress up.
So, thank you, Mayor and council members, and thank the families and the friends of the officers that are here, as well as another special guest. And as always, it's great to kind of look out and see how many can make it, because we've built such a great ecosystem with our team downstairs. But before we proceed with our commissioning ceremony, I want to take a moment to recognize a member of our community who played a vital role during a recent burglary investigation. And as your police chief, it's my privilege to present the Citizens Commodations Medal and our award. And this is an honor reserved for individuals whose actions have directly contributed to the apprehension of criminals and the safety of our city. So, tonight I invite Mr. Alan Garber to come up and stand with me. So, to acknowledge his outstanding contribution, I want you all to know that about 9:30 on September 14th, officers were dispatched to a burglary in progress on Sedwick. And our initial reports were that two individuals had broken a window, entered the business, and then fled the area in a vehicle. Upon arriving, our officers discovered the front door had been shattered, and there was obvious signs of a burglary inside. And while they were conducting their investigation, Mr. Garber showed up. And he had been getting gas across the street when he heard the sound of breaking glass. And he witnessed two subjects running from the store and entering a vehicle without its lights on. And so, demonstrating great civic responsibility, Mr. Garber followed that car to the parking lot of a nearby grocery store, where he photographed the vehicle and the two subjects before they went inside. So, thanks to Mr. Garber's quick thinking and willingness to get involved, our officers were able to locate the vehicle, gather crucial evidence, and make three felony arrests. So, Mr. Garber's actions exemplify the power of community partnerships in law enforcement. His courage made a difference, and for that, we are deeply, deeply grateful. So, it is with great pride that I present you, Mr. Garber, the Police Chief's Commendation Medal, and thank you for assisting our community. Thanks, thank you. (applause) Yeah, we have a picture out there, I'm sure they even want to close, close it up. Did you guys want? Can you come up? You're welcome. And then again, as we have done in the past, it is my distinct honor to hold this commissioning ceremony in front of the council and the public, introduce you to our three newest officers. So, if I can have them step forward, please.
We should have just stayed down there.
Well, I might go a little long. So, this is Bobby Andrews, and Officer Andrews originally from Lake Charles, Louisiana. Came to the Pacific Northwest 20 years ago. Before public service, he farmed oysters and kelp on a subtitle oyster farm located on the shores of Hood Canal. And for the last 11 years, he's enjoyed participating in endurance sports. Starting with the Ironman, progressing to ultra-running, and completing races from 50 to 240 miles. His biggest achievement was competing in the world's toughest footrace known as the Badwater 135. And both times he ran that race, he finished in the top 20. And through this event, he is proud to have raised funds for Stand Up For Pits, a charity organization dedicated to advocating and saving the lives of pit bulls. When relaxing, he enjoys golf and spending time with his wife and family, preferably with ample food, especially after running 135 miles. Vanessa Futch is originally from Heinzville, Georgia, and came to the Pacific Northwest while serving six years in the United States Navy. While onboard the USS Nimitz aircraft carrier, she was a marine electrician and a fitness trainer. After her service, she received a bachelor's degree in nutrition science, completed her ISSA personal trainer certification, and obtained a four-year trade program certificate in commercial electric work. She is supported by her partner TJ and friends in the local fitness community, and she spends her free time training and competing in bodybuilding and strongman competitions. And finally, we have Crystal Schroder. She's originally from Mississippi and continued her educational journey in South Carolina for forensic anthropology. She spent four years in South Carolina serving as a police officer, where she also performed as a crime scene investigator and a field training officer. She spends her free time baking lots of sweet treats, which we can attest to, and going on hikes with her two dogs. So, as you also know, I find it important that when we do these commissioning ceremonies that we provide a reminder of why we do what we do, and so I appreciate the grace as I read the law enforcement code of ethics. So, as a law enforcement officer, my fundamental duty is to serve the community, to safeguard lives and property, to protect the innocent against deception, the weak against oppression or intimidation, and the peaceful against violence or disorder, and to respect the constitutional rights of all to liberty, equality, and justice. I will keep my private life unsullied as an example to all, and will behave in a manner which does not bring discredit to me or my agency. I will maintain courageous calm in the face of danger, scorn, or ridicule, develop self-restraint, be constantly mindful of the welfare of others. Honest in thought and deed in both my personal and official life, I will be exemplary in obeying the law of the land and the regulations of my department. Whatever I see or hear of a confidential nature, or that is confided to me in an official capacity, will be kept ever secret unless revelation is necessary in the performance of my duty. I will never act officiously or promote personal feelings, prejudices, political beliefs, aspirations, animosities, or friendships to influence my decisions. With no compromise for crime, with relentless prosecution of criminals, I will enforce the law courteously and appropriately, without fear, favor, malice, or ill will, never employing unnecessary force or violence, and never accepting gratuities. I recognize the badge of my office as a symbol of public faith, and I accept it as a public trust to be held so long as I am true to the ethics of the police service. I will never engage in acts of bribery, nor will I condone such acts by other police officers. I will cooperate with all legally authorized agencies and their representatives in the pursuit of justice. For I know that I alone am responsible for my own standard of professional performance. Will take every opportunity to enhance and improve my level of knowledge and competence. I will constantly strive to achieve these objectives and ideals, dedicating myself to my chosen profession, law enforcement. So, if I can have you guys face this way and raise your right hand, and I'll go slow because I know it takes a minute. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Vanessa Futch.
Go on, say it. Having been duly appointed, I am the deputy officer for the city of Port Orchard, Washington.
(laughter)
Okay. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and partially.
That I will faithfully and partially.
Perform the duties of my appointment.
Perform the duties of my appointment.
As prescribed by law.
As prescribed by law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
And enforce the ordinances.
And enforce the ordinances.
Of the city of Port Orchard.
Of the city of Port Orchard.
The laws and constitution of the state of Washington.
The laws and constitution of the United States of Washington.
And the constitution of the United States of America.
And the constitution of the United States of America.
You guys want to come down again? I don't know, we have our own person. I gotta go slower, I'm sorry. It's true, it's true. Don't get in there, come on, darling. Thank you.
Oh, that was mine, that's fine.
Three more, sir. All right.
No, no.
We're in close. We lost one.
I don't... Yeah, I think they did the... But first citizen comment, but not the second one.
All right, we are to our next presentation. And now, you've cleared the room, Mr. Ryan. We're going to talk about sewer utility asset and workflow summary, and there's nobody left. Jerry came in, though.
I was looking for...
Should be back there, yeah. Might be on the table. Go ahead, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, before you is just, tonight we have a couple items that are public hearing. Last week at work study, we discussed sewer rates and then the sewer plan update draft. So, I promised council that I would bring some detailed stats of our sewer plan. I do want to give some shout-out to Kayden, who is our asset management technician. He helped pull this number, he really enjoys it, but it's a... Do you have the presentation ready, or do you want me to show my screen?
If you want to share your screen, you can. For some reason, I have two presentations, and I'm not sure which is which.
I will share my screen here, one moment.
And then you can flip through at your leisure versus...
All right. It's not loaded, there it go. So, just some update, quick information on our assets that we have for the sewer utility asset. So, as I mentioned last week at the very end of the meeting, we have to date a TV 23.1%. That's realistic current information. When we first got the TV truck, there was additional footage, but it wasn't relevant as far as how we were testing it and the systems that have been put in place since. So, currently, we have faith in 23.1% of our gravity sewer infrastructure TVed. In the purple, you'll see what has remained to do. So, just over 75% remaining of the city that needs to be TVed and inspected. And with that inspection, we also have to clean the lines before we run the camera down these lines. This map just out is an overlay of all the different sewer lift station locations we have throughout the city. That's the reason that we do have so many, we have 22 that are listed in the general sewer plan. Our terrain, you get to the highway and the terrain changes, so it's not always running downhill.
Can you maximize your screen?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't think I can.
Maybe you can.
Is that helping?
No, that's okay. There you go. Thank you.
How's that?
Much better.
Okay.
Or a little better, anyway.
So, again, the purple is what is remaining to be inspected, and the green has been inspected. And this, again, is our lift stations throughout the city. We have a lot of lift stations for a city our size, and that's primarily due to the terrain of the city and the city limits. Just a quick rundown of our assets. So, 1,442 segments, so just over 54 miles of gravity sewer. We have 22 miles of pressure mains, 22 lift stations, 22 wet wells, which some of you might know what a wet well is, but it's as big as a room, and they require regular maintenance and cleaning. Similar with a dry well, we got three of those. And then pumps. These pumps aren't small pumps, sometimes they're as big as a Volkswagen, but not quite that big. But the pumps are maintenance-heavy, they have to be rebuilt quite frequently, and the maintenance is integral parts of the lift stations. And then we additionally have emergency overflow tanks of three. So, this next slide, just kind of a quick breakdown of what we've encountered the last year. So, we have 138 step systems, which are a different type of sewer treatment that's tied into our gravity, that's primarily the McCormick Woods area. We've had 51 total ERTs reported this year for broken sewer lines. So, 51 total, I'm sorry, 24 of the ERTs reports that are reported to the Department of Ecology are 24 broken sewer lines. So, a couple a month. Plan tasks. Currently, we've identified 3,235 tasks that we plan on doing in our carbograph asset management system. Of those, we've completed to date 1,558. As we talked about those positions, the additional staffing would help with upcoming sewer projects, bringing some of the minor repairs in-house to be ahead of these deferred maintenance issues that we've discussed previously. We also have future lift station upgrades, like the sewer controls, that will be completed in just under a year. Council previously awarded that contract for that project. Again, we have 4.5 total sewer employees in the current state. Half of that employee is our city electrician, who is also half-funded through Water. That is the conclusion of the information tonight that I had.
Questions, Mr. Ryan? I guess this was data that was asked for last week at the work study? Okay, all right. We'll move on then to our first public hearing. Mr. Vaughn, this first one is you. It's a development agreement with McCormick Communities for Transportation Improvements.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. Before the city council tonight is a development agreement, which we are required to hold a public hearing for before you can vote on it. And that agreement is to amend our development agreement with McCormick Woods, that's contract 035-21. This is the second amendment to that development agreement, and it's a relatively simple agreement. It is simply extending the deadline for completing a required improvement from the original agreement, and that improvement is the roundabout at McCormick Woods Drive and Old Clifton Road. And what we've identified through our water system modeling is that there is a water main that needs to be installed on Old Clifton Road that would go right through this intersection. And so, our desire, from the city's perspective, is to delay the construction of that project until after we've completed our water main project. And the developer is also interested in delaying the construction of that project. And so, it doesn't amend any of the other terms of the agreement, and the recommendation is for the city council to hold a public hearing on Amendment 2 to contract 035-21. Thanks.
Okay, I'll be opening a public hearing on the development agreement with McCormick Communities related to transportation improvements. Anyone wishing to testify in this manner, please step to the microphone. And this is specific to the McCormick Communities' transportation improvements. And if there's anyone online, use the raise your hand feature, and the clerk will bring you into the meeting. One last call. Anyone wishing to testify on the development agreement with McCormick Communities for Transportation Improvements? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. So, we are to our second public hearing, which is a public hearing on the general sewer plan. Mr. Ryan, this is you.
Thank you. The city has completed the 2025 general sewer plan update.
And what we've identified through our water system modeling is that there is a, uh, water main that needs to be installed on Old Clifton Road that would go right through this intersection. And so our desire, uh, from the city's perspective is to delay the construction of that project until after we've completed our water main project. And, um, the developer is also interested in, in delaying the construction of that project. And so, um, it doesn't amend any of the other terms of the agreement. And, uh, the recommendation is for the city council to hold a public hearing on amendment two to contract 035-21. Thanks.
Okay, I'll be opening a public hearing on the development agreement with McCormick Communities related to transportation improvements. Anyone wishing to testify in this manner, uh, please step to the microphone. And this is specific to the McCormick Communities Transportation Improvements. And if there's anyone online, use the raise your hand feature and the clerk will bring you into the meeting. One last call, anyone wishing to testify on the development agreement with McCormick Communities for Transportation Improvements. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. So we are to our second public hearing, which is a public hearing on the general sewer plan. Mr. Ryan, this is you.
Thank you. Uh, the city has completed the 2025 general sewer plan update, which outlines long-term strategies for managing and expanding the municipal sewer system. The plan evaluates current infrastructure, including the 72 miles of sewer mains, 22 lift stations and the shared South Kitsap Treatment Facility, and includes updated modeling and a 20-year capital improvement program. Key recommendations include lift station upgrades, integration with the city asset management system, additional staffing, improved inspection and monitoring practices. The plan addresses future growth, regional coordination and potential reclaimed water use. Staff recommends holding a public hearing to allow council and the community to review and comment on the plan before formal adoption.
Okay, we are going to open a public hearing on the general sewer plan. Anyone wishing to testify on the matter of the general sewer plan, you can step to the microphone. Anyone online, uh, could use the raise your hand feature and the clerk would bring you into the meeting. That was the same, uh, plan that was, I believe, discussed and presentation on last Tuesday's meeting, correct? All right, anyone? If you wish to testify on the general sewer plan, Jerry?
I wanted to ask a question. I, I mean, I didn't hear about a sewer plan until yesterday. And I've been busy, so I didn't have the chance to look at your meeting that was listed in the email that I got yesterday. And so I know nothing about what you're trying to charge us, absolutely nothing. And I just, why don't we in a community?
Jerry, Jerry, you're gonna need to step up the microphone if you're gonna apply testimony.
Okay, Jerry Harmon, previous only person attending these meetings for 10-plus years. Okay, I know nothing about what is happening here. And I was gone all day today, didn't have a chance to look at your, um, private meeting that you had. I just think that people need to know before the last minute and you're making decisions. Everybody in this community should know, everybody. The biggest issue with most people is the cost of living. This is their cost of living. You may need it, but if we're not informed early enough, everybody's going to be very negative. And I was thinking, okay, how am I charged for my sewer? One person in my home, toilet gets flushed maybe two, three times a day. Wash dishes a couple of times a day. How am I compared to all of the businesses in this community that might have 10 restrooms? You know, all the things, I mean, how are these decisions made and how is my bill coming to me? And is it fair to me? Because the last time, and I did it on the water, the people at the bottom are paying twice of what the people at the top are doing per gallon of water. And I was poo-pooed by our finance person on that time. But I went through it very, very thoroughly. I just want to know what is going to cost me and why it's going to cost me. And another thing, I may be having hearing problems, but for new systems, I didn't get hardly anything of what you were saying. You're talking very, very quickly, reading something off of a paper and that, and it's not coming out clearly. So, and maybe it's my fault for not having hearing aids. But I'm, I'm just saying, I just need some information. And to be voting on this and the people in.
So Jerry, Jerry, there's no vote on this this evening?
Okay, I thought that's what the email said, that you were making your decisions tonight.
So there's, there was a presentation, so you can watch the video from last Tuesday.
I didn't know anything about it and I said I was gone all day. I got home just a few minutes ago.
I'm just trying to help, help you out here.
Right.
So this is a public hearing on the matter tonight and the sewer rates tonight. And there could be action at the next city council meeting.
Okay, I'll be here.
All right.
You may have me coming back.
Yeah, that last, Jerry, last Tuesday's council meeting is very informative. There's an entire presentation about the rate structure. And you should be happy with it because it shifts the burden more to the commercial accounts from the residential accounts. All right?
Thank you.
Right, anyone else wishing to testify on the general sewer plan?
Hey there, Jessica Gallegos White coming at you again. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak. So our, um, situation with the sewer is, you know, twofold. So we have two lines of property that go on two different parcels that are zoned differently. A sewer line was put up in a Sunset Lane, but it was only put up Sunset Lane about.
We're taking testimony on our general sewer plan, not your specific issue?
This, I think, goes into the planning part of that. Because when that sewer line went in, we as residents were not notified that the sewer line was going in. And when I contacted the city of Port Orchard, the city of Port Orchard didn't know that the sewer line was going in.
This is not germane to, to the topic that we're, I'm taking a public hearing on. So if you've got comments specific to our general sewer plan, we welcome those comments.
Well, how is that line that, that went up into that property as part of your sewer plan, right?
It is not part of the six-year CIP that's listed in the sewer plan.
Okay.
It's a, it's a capital improvement plan.
It's a capital improvement plan. So how do the fees of connection relate to your plan? Are these more specific questions for your plan?
It's, this, your, your, it's not a question, it's an answer. It's, it's your providing testimony or comment related to the general sewer plan that we presented.
Okay, well, we didn't know that there was, we thought that there was, uh, council meetings every other Tuesday. We didn't know that there was a council meeting last week on the sewer plan.
It was a.
It's a work study.
A work study, okay. Um, so yeah, so my questions are around the fees for the connections of your sewer plan and how those are calculated and how they are distributed through the plan. Those are my questions.
You're, you're, you're providing testimony, not questions. We don't answer questions in a public.
So we have her, we have her contact and we can get her an answer for that.
Certainly, Mr. Ryan, Mr. Ryan is planning on getting ahold of her.
Someone needs a, someone needs a answer, talk to her.
Yeah, for sure.
So we have your contact information and Mr. Ryan will reach out with and answer that exact question.
Okay. I think that there needs to be more transparency about the plan and educating community members. So that's my testimony.
Thank you, and I'd just like, uh, Jerry here, I'd encourage you to watch the video from last Tuesday's meeting. Could answer many of your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to testify on the, in the public hearing for the general sewer plan? One online either, so I'm gonna close the public hearing on the general sewer plan. We have a third public hearing and the public hearing on the sewer rate charges. Mr. Ryan, this is you again.
Thank you. The city has completed a comprehensive sewer utility rate study in coordination with the 2025 general sewer plan update. The study conducted by the FCS group evaluated current sewer rates, revenue needs and the rate structure for citizens and, um, commercial businesses. It recommends an annual revenue increase of 4.5% through 2030 to meet operational and capital needs, including funding for two additional sewer division employees. The study also proposes simplifying the non-residential rate structure and aligning costs more accurately across the customer classes. Rates are based on equivalent residential units, RERUs, with residential and non-residential customers billed accordingly. Staff recommends holding a public hearing to present the proposed rate adjustments and gather public input prior to council consideration. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing on the sewer rate changes. Anyone wishing to testify on the sewer rate changes is welcome to testify.
If you don't tell us, at least give us some idea if we don't know. We're here because we're concerned, but the answer we're getting is you're ignorant and if you wanna learn, go watch a video. But you're making decisions now on what we have no idea, some of us here. So we can't even say, 4.5% to other people doesn't tell us what we're going to be charged.
Ryan's putting some information on the screen for, related to it at this time.
The clerk's helping me. Thanks, Randy.
Once again, this is a public hearing on the matter and no action is being taken this evening.
So I, I can, I can walk us through this, just a kind of a quick overview?
That'd be great, Mr. Ryan.
Um, and I, I wish Director Crocker was here and, uh, um, he has a greater handle on this rate structure, but.
He's online.
He was, I'm sure he's.
Oh, okay.
So I'll, I'll, I'll just kinda talk as if this is a single resident ERU, uh, similar to what a single family would pay in the city of Port Orchard. The current rate structure is that, that single, um, family dwelling or that one ERU would pay $163 a month biannually. So I do wanna verify that this is, there is a different.
That would be bi-monthly, not biannually.
I'm sorry, bi-monthly, I apologize. Yes.
It's a 3.4 increase, I need to find the 4.5.
Yes, yes. There we go. Yeah, perfect. So current, current state is somebody who's living in a single-family home in Port Orchard is paying $163 bi-monthly. So under this proposed, uh, table, um, the single-family residences are gonna see a decrease in 2026 of $153.05 will be the next, the new biannually, bi-monthly rate. So there is.
Mr. Ryan, they're not gonna go down by 150, they're gonna, they're gonna go by $10.
They're gonna go by $153.
To $153.
Yes, so 2026, 153, dropping down from 163. Um, you see that number start climbing back up in 2027 and 2028 would be the first year under this proposed table that a single-family residence will see an increase in their bi-monthly rate.
Public comment? Yeah, 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 there's public comment next week too. But not, but the pub, not a public hearing, this is the only public hearing. But anybody could make comment, public comment. Yeah. Okay, or, or provide written comment. Okay? Did that answer your question, Jerry?
Um, I'm getting some information, which is what I came for tonight, was to get information. You know, I.
Jerry, do you, you have a good, does the clerk's office have your email address for? Does the clerk's office have an email address for you? Why don't, we can email this presentation to you that was given last Tuesday. Yeah, that way you can have it to digest it. Okay, all right. We are in a public hearing for the proposed sewer rate changes. Anyone wishing to testify on this matter? And next Tuesday, as Councilmember Warden asked the question, there's the public comment period, or you could provide written comment ahead of next Tuesday. It's, it's two weeks, there's two weeks.
The 14th, October 14th.
October 14th would be the first opportunity that the city council could take action on this. And I think they're proposing to take action on it. All right? Hearing, no one providing testimony, I'm gonna close the public hearing on the proposed sewer rate changes. Okay, we're to our three business items. And Mr. Vaughn, after your business item, you can probably go home and I'm gonna give Shelley your, your seat, if you don't mind.
My, my second business item, I.
Okay, why don't, why don't you do both your business items then? All right, so we're at business items now. Uh, the first of which is a development agreement with McCormick Communities for Transportation Improvements. Mr. Vaughn, this is you.
Yes, so this is a, um, development agreement, a, a second amendment to the development agreement for transportation with McCormick Communities. And as presented during the public hearing, uh, section of tonight's meeting, the, uh, the amendment to the agreement simply delays construction of a roundabout to facilitate the installation of a, a city water main until, uh, we wanna wait to build the roundabout until after that water main has been constructed. And the staff recommendation is to approve the development agreement with McCormick Communities, uh, for transportation as presented.
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance approving the second amendment to the 2021 McCormick Woods Development Agreement for Transportation as Presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Trenary, second by Councilmember Warden to.
Transportation improvements for McCormick Communities. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Item B now, adoption of a resolution, authorization of the mayor to execute a contract with Transportation Group, Inc.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, before you is a resolution for the adoption of, um, the design for the intersection of Southwest Old Clifton Road and Anderson Hill Roundabout. Old Clifton and Anderson Hill has been identified for capacity and safety improvements with right-of-way secured and jurisdictional coordination with Kitsap County complete. The city is moving forward with final design services to bring a previously 75% complete roundabout design to full completion. The updated design will address traffic operations, pedestrian safety, lighting, utilities and environmental permitting. Using the MRSC consultant roster, the city selected Transpo Group Incorporated as the most qualified firm through a competitive RFQ process. A professional service agreement was negotiated for an amount not to exceed $294,300 with a co, contract term through January 31st, 2027. And that is when we anticipate to start construction. Thank you.
I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Transpo Group for the design of the Old Clifton Road and Anderson Hill Roundabout project in the amount of $294,300.
Second.
I have one, thought a roundabout right down the street. I get this question non-stop. You know, talk about when you take the Old Clifton exit right there and if you go down, if you go stop sign, go left up to Old Clifton or you go right towards Tremont? It's state overpass of the freeway? Correct. Um, that's state underneath there?
That's the state, yeah.
How do we advocate to them about some kind of improvements? Cause that is deadly and people are, it's getting really bad.
Um, I typically recommend people don't, take, take the.
Go to the roundabout and come back through. I, I tell them that as well.
I tell, I tell people that all the time, don't get, make that left turn.
Don't do it, I agree.
Yeah, but, uh, yeah.
Is it identified, is it, has it been identified, has it been talked about?
Well.
Can't put a roundabout there, but some kind of traffic mitigation.
Yeah, I think someday it will be a roundabout there. You, you're aware of where he's referring to? The, um, westerly.
Yeah, so that, that was studied, um, I think in 2017, the state did the SR16 all the way through Gig Harbor to Gorst, looking at all of the intersections. And while they did identify that as needing improvement, it was pretty far down the list relative to, um, Watachet in Gig Harbor and then Sedgwick in Port Orchard. And, um, so it, it didn't rate very highly in terms of being a priority, but we were able to get some improvements. Now that you have a right turn lane there at the, um, I guess it's the westbound off-ramp from SR16, we had a developer put that in, that was something that we pushed for so that people could get around everyone who was waiting to turn left. Um, and as well as the channelization further down the road for people trying to get onto the freeway heading back towards Tacoma, that, that turn pocket was added by a developer. So there, there are opportunities to, to force improvements on new development if we had a big enough project. But right now, it just doesn't seem to be a, a high priority for the state. So maybe something for your legislative discussion.
I think numbers have changed a lot since 17, but, um, I appreciate the information. That's something I can share, you know, with, it's been a hot topic last year, so.
I, I get that from time to time too, and I just recommend make a right turn and swing around in the roundabout. It's way safer. Yeah. Okay, Councilmember Fenton, go ahead.
Yeah, did we, did we get a grant for that Old Clifton and Anderson Hill Roundabout?
No, no, we didn't.
We didn't get nothing on that?
We've gotten develop, uh, nickel, what's the?
Yeah, so, so there was a project all the way back in 2013 when I first started here called the Bayside Development in Bremerton. And they were required to pay mitigation fees to the city to eventually. And they were required to pay mitigation fees to the city to eventually improve that. And so that money was collected as each house was built. We received additional money from the Sinclair Ridge Development in Bremerton, which I believe is, the finance director has allocated some of that money towards building the roundabout. And then there are impact fees that are paid by all development within the city. So we actually have, I believe, full funding for this project in-house through all of these mitigation fees that have been collected and that have been sitting in interest-bearing accounts. I think we're at the point where we have enough money to build this because we've gone after grants and it hasn't scored well. But it's something that we are committed to building because we've taken money from developers towards, towards the project.
And then my other question was, I'm always big on safety. So you said for the roundabout, are we going to be putting flashing lights? Or, you know, for the pedestrians to, how safe that's going to be for that roundabout?
Old Clifton along there doesn't have sidewalks. Right along the shoulder of the road, you'll get, it's a separated pathway off the shoulder, and that's a, that's a future project we have. I don't know that there's sidewalks that tie into this.
Yeah, I think we would set it up so that you can add those flashing lights in the future, but right now, there's no pedestrian facilities to actually get to the intersection. So it's premature to install something like that.
But we would do conduit.
Friendly conduits, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trenary?
Yeah, Mr. Vaughn, what's the realistic timeframe on these two roundabouts? Construction start time and then anticipated construction length?
This, this project, the Anderson Hill Roundabout, our hope is to go to construction in 2027, assuming that the city council budgets the project. I think we have the money in the city now, and as long as the designs and permitting is done, we should be able to go out, out to construction in '27, or possibly '28 if there is some delay. The McCormick Woods Drive Roundabout is going to depend on when we get that water main project done. And so we're, we're currently negotiating with McCormick to potentially revise the existing water agreement, and we're asking them to build that water line improvement. But until we have a final agreement, we won't know the timing for whether they build that or whether it's something that we need to build with our capital dollars that we collect from every connection that comes into the city.
So it sounds like Anderson Hill, which to me is a higher priority, will take place first?
I believe so at this point, yes.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Rose Pepe?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm fully supportive of the Anderson Hill Roundabout. When I was Director of Transportation with South Kids of School District, we had an accident, no fault of our own, no kids on the bus, thank God, there at that intersection. And we went from saying you can make a left-hand turn off of Anderson to no left-hand turn off of Anderson, directing all buses. So we couldn't get this project done soon enough. And much like Eric, I do hear a lot of comments about can we get this done sooner? So fully support this, and thank you for your efforts in getting this done.
All right. Further questions? You'd be voting on adoption of a resolution to, for the mayor to execute a contract with Transpo, Inc., Group, Inc. for the Old Clifton Road and Anderson Hill Roundabout Design Project. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the contract has been approved. We are to our new business item C, which is previously consent item E. Mr. Ryan, this is you.
Thank you. Before you is a resolution for the purchase of three F-150 Ford Lightnings. The 2025-2026 budget includes funding to replace three electric SUVs through the ERNR fund. Staff now recommends purchasing Ford F-150 Lightnings electric trucks instead, which better met operational needs to field inspections and utility work. These trucks will be procured through the state DES Contract Service with Bud Clary Ford as a cost of approximately $72,000 to $80,000 each, before tax credits. The proposed resolution authorizes the fleet modification and associated purchase. And just to clarify, this is three existing SUVs that will become electric vehicles. Thank you.
Councilmember Warden?
Make that motion. I move to approve a resolution authorizing the purchase of ERNR vehicles, 1012, 1046, 1061, of electric Ford F-150 trucks in lieu of electric sports vehicles, utility vehicles, for a total purchase price of $177,437.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Warden, a second by Councilmember Trenary. Are there questions about this purchase?
There is. I've approved every, I've voted to approve, every electric vehicle so far. Cars especially. The trucks, I definitely take some issue with. They're not practical for fieldwork. The beds of these trucks are five feet. I understand that these are for engineers to haul them around in. But when it comes to maintenance workers, if fieldwork, they're still just rear-end haulers around town. A five-foot bed, a shovel's five feet. They're not practical for fieldwork. They're not practical for hauling weight, they're not practical for pulling trailers. I understand the mandate to go electric, but you don't have to follow the mandate if the vehicles don't meet your needs, if they don't offer your needs. And a five-foot bed, there's a reason that a lot of the cities and counties around here are not buying electric trucks for maintenance workers. So I see on here that we have two for engineers, and then we have one for storm. The extended range is the cab?
The extended range is additional battery for...
Battery.
Yep.
So we still have, for a stormwater department, a maintenance department, who has to carry numerous things around, from construction projects to everything else, a five-foot bed. My Ford Ranger that I drive around all day at work, it's a great truck for me, but it's a five-foot bed. A shovel sticks out of the back of that truck. I don't understand why we're buying five-foot beds. And pretty positive, if you ask your staff, they'd give feedback of what I'm saying because we, we live in that world. And I just don't, I don't, I don't like this idea at all. I understand that for the engineering staff and whatnot, completely different. But when it comes to the fieldwork, the electric trucks, the models they have currently today, the design models, they're not, those don't meet the staff's needs. That's what happens.
Appreciate your feedback. We do have a numerous different vehicles, from 450s to 350s to 250s, that we haul things, you know, in, you know, I'm, I'm not involved in the selection of which vehicles, but I know our, our finance department, our public works department work hand-in-hand to determine the right vehicles for the right operations. And we've got a number of these electric pickups that are saving us a tremendous amount of money on fuel. And when we need to haul things, we have trucks that are fossil fuel trucks that are, you know, have towing capacity and hauling capacity that these vehicles don't have, that, that you're speaking to.
How many more electric trucks do you plan on buying for maintenance departments?
I can't speak...
I mean, as we, as we lose them, anything below an F-250, anything above an F-150 is not electric, they don't offer that currently.
Correct. So when we do our annual budget process, that's when we identify what will vehicles we're buying and what, you know, in what capacity? In this particular resolution, we intended to buy SUVs, and the engineering department's saying, hey, those aren't going to meet our needs, and that's why, part of why this is back before you guys, that and the dollar amount, of course.
I am definitely, like I said, we've had a discussion over EVs. I'm not an anti-EV person. I'm just, when it comes to the work trucks, there's just a big difference, so.
Appreciate the feedback. Any other?
Yeah.
Councilmember, go ahead.
Yeah, well, yeah, public works to me is an essential work truck. And so I think in the winter time, that EV truck and how short the bed is, I kind of question that. And aren't these EVs costing more than a regular truck? I would, I think, I would think so. And then I know last year, we just bought three of these trucks, brand-new ones. And so now we want three more of these trucks, so six altogether. I don't know, I just feel like the, the price, and then if it's winter time, the battery is going to go down quicker. And so I'm, I'm, I'm just not for the EV trucks on these either. I kind of question that, so, yeah. And plus, I've said, I have said no on EV trucks, but I've been the only one.
Appreciate your feedback. All right, Councilmember Trenary?
All right, I'll weigh in on this one. What we're here for tonight is basically the difference in $2,329.76 between the already approved and budgeted Ford SUVs to the 150 Lightnings, I guess is what they're called, electric Ford vehicles. My only real question on this comes with, and I don't know if you can answer this, Director Ryan, or not, but in your, in the staff report here, it says, "It was determined that electric trucks better support the operational needs of the Public Works Department, engineering, and storm drainage divisions." But do they best fit those operational needs? They're better than the SUVs, but are they really the right choice for the city moving forward?
So I will answer the question, when we were evaluating the best fit, we were looking at purchasing because of our policy, is that we will purchase an electric SUV. And SUV now are very similar to what a minivan looks like. They're low-profile, they're not suitable to go off-road as a construction site. So weighing what our options were, we evaluated even looking at the Mavericks, which we don't know if they'll be available as a hybrid. So we were just evaluating to other hybrids when we say best available.
Other questions?
Yeah, in general, is there any urgency for this being decided? Do you have a deadline by which you need to purchase?
We have a purchase order with the dealership, there's a window of time to buy these in, yes.
So we need to decide by the end of the month, or like October 15th?
We are. By the end of the month.
There are two available right now at the dealership that are 2025 models. If it gets later and they're not available, there's going to be probably significant price increases.
So we don't have time to just make sure that these are what is needed? Or you're, you're assuring us that these are what are needed?
These are what we've needed. We've evaluated, and we've gone through an extensive process to determine this is the vehicles that we need.
And this is the first time over the agenda that we've heard about it because it hasn't been discussed in any work study or in a committee?
It wouldn't be. With the vehicle purchases are part of the overall budget. We're modifying, the request was to modify, instead of buying the SUVs, to buy the pickup trucks. That was, that's the difference. We already, the budget already contemplated purchasing the SUVs. And as Mr. Ryan spoke to, the SUVs don't have the ground clearance to work in the, on, on job sites that the pickups have. So that's why we've changed directions and deemed that this is a better tool to equip our, our field crew with, so. Yes, sir.
So again, I'll reiterate, what we're here for tonight is to authorize $2,329.76 additional cents per vehicle purchase over what was already budgeted. That's really what we're here for. If they're identified as a better fit for what we're doing, we're, we're looking for, or the city's looking for us to approve $2,329.76 additional costs to best fit their needs.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Councilmember Trenary. Any further questions?
No, I have a...
Go ahead.
Thank you. No, I try not to decide what our directors need for tools. I think the budgetary question is the one that Mark has raised. I think it's appropriate for us to, if we see these trucks being replaced sooner than what's needed, we can ask those questions about why did we get this or that? But right now, I'm going to support our directors in the tools that they need. Thank you.
I think it's appropriate to discuss the tools that are needed. It's appropriate, when we're going to vote on something, and there's information given to us, it's appropriate to ask questions and ask, why are we going this route? There's nothing, there's nothing wrong with that.
I, I'm not saying that.
No, go ahead.
Appreciate your feedback. Go ahead, Councilmember J.
Okay. I'm, I'm appreciative of getting the discussion and the reassurance. I do have one last question, which I, I understand these are EV trucks. Are these taken home by the workers, or are these, these are parked here?
They're, they're not parked here, but they're parked at Public Works.
Okay, so they're parked in places where there's charges, okay.
We have a charging station for them, yes. It's an investment we've already made.
Okay.
All right? Okay, you will be voting on a resolution approving the purchase of three ERNR electric Ford F-150 trucks from Bud Clary Ford in lieu of three EV SUVs. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed?
Aye.
We have one in opposition. The resolution passes. We are to item D, which was previously consent item H, which is the approval of amendment number 17 to contract number 066.20 with Rice-Fergus Miller. Mr. Vaughn, this is you.
Yes, good evening. Amendment number 17 to contract 66-20 is to prepare a schematic design and a donor recognition strategy for the Community Event Center. This expenditure is intended to allow us to conduct fundraising and sell naming and, whether it's bricks or other ways of recognizing donations to the Community Event Center. This is, our architect has hired a consultant that will assist with the development of this strategy, and will ultimately hopefully allow us to raise significantly more money than what this costs. So the staff recommendation is to approve amendment 17 to contract 66-20 with Rice-Fergus Miller in the amount of $37,045 as presented.
Yes, I'll, go ahead. Run through all these. I move to approve amendment 17 to contract 06-20 with Rice-Fergus Miller in the amount of $37,045 as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Warden, a second by Councilmember Trenary. Any questions, Mr. Vaughn? Go ahead, Councilmember Trenary.
Yeah, I do have some questions about this one. Can you give us a little more detail on what the schematic design and donor recognition strategy entails?
Well, there are a lot of ideas for things that we can do to recognize donors and fundraise, but we do not have anything designed that would be integrated with the building. So this is actually finding ways to incorporate that recognition into the design of our building. So it's, it's whether we're going to do bricks, whether we're going to do room naming. We've talked about selling the, the naming of a room. Somebody, if somebody made a large donation, we could have the, the Councilmember Mark Trenary conference room. And so that all has to be designed to have a look and a feel that is coordinated with the overall aesthetic of the building. And the, the plan, the, the plan would essentially lay out all of the different options and hone in on the preferred option of the city council. So I think there's, there's a little bit of looking at alternatives, probably some checking with the city council to see which options you like, which ones you don't, before finalizing what that design looks like so that we can do fundraising.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Fenton?
Yeah, I'm, I was curious about this one, too. So that, for this fundraiser, fundraising, that the taxpayers have to pay $37,000-plus to come up with a fundraiser for, can't this be an in-house decision?
It's not paying for the fundraising, it's paying for the design and determining what elements we would potentially offer to donors or what fundraising opportunities, like bricks or things within the building or around the building, to offset our, some of our costs, to raise money.
Right. Yeah, and that's, and I get that for bricks, or I just have a hard time paying someone else for the fundraiser at that. I thought we had enough... I thought we had enough-
We're not paying-
Well, they're doing a design-
They're doing, telling us where we have opportunities and incorporating those into the design elements of the building. It's part of the design. It's not, it's not, it's not about fun, the fundraising aspect of it.
Well, how come this wasn't presented a long time ago when we did the design with them? So, now all of a sudden, we're saying, "Oh, we need a fundraiser to de, to design again on the community center?"
It's not about a fundraiser, it's about elements that we can, um, offer it for, to a, in, in a fundraiser or for court, like corporate sponsorship or, uh, uh, that, that type of thing. It's not, it's not about paying for someone to raise money for us.
No, I know that. There, I, I get that. But we can't come up with that ourselves, we have to have the architect to, um, help us design, um-
I don't think any of us are qualified to, at least I'm not.
Well, and, and you have to remember that we're putting the project out to bid to a contractor eventually, and so the contractor has to, uh, whether there's a wall that includes bricks or whatever, they have to build that, and that has to be in the plan set. So, the architect is responsible for pa, for preparing the architectural plans, and this, if we want to incorporate these things into the architectural plans and have the contractor provide these opportunities, it has to, it has to get into the plan spec.
Yeah, well, and that's again, if we didn't take this off con, consent, there was, there's so many stuff on consent that is not even in a work study or, um, brought up in a committee. All of a sudden, it's like, "Oh, here, we wanna pay, you know, this and this and that." And so, I just kinda find it, um, that we, we haven't talked about this prior, instead of we get it on the agenda, you know, on Friday, and then we have to, you know, ask questions about it. Cause I, I didn't know this was gonna be part of the-
I'm pretty sure all four of these items were discussed, uh, two months ago and in a, in a-
It says, if you look at it, it says non-applicable.
This, this one has been talked about previously, but it's, it's probably been two years at least, but we've, all the way back to early conceptual design, we've talked about, um, having these opportunities for recognizing donors. It's just, we're finally at the point of design where we can actually put somebody to work on this task.
I, it would, I would just appreciate more information or, or talking about it sooner than just, um, you know, a couple days before we have, um, a city council meeting.
Councilmember Warden?
Yeah, um, I'm not against the idea of, um, what Dr. Bond was talking about, you know, some, I think that's almost more community, you know, when you are doing something like this. When I was reading it over, um, and I talked to Mark and some people, like, just trying to figure it out, and we're kinda spinning our heads a little bit in what it actually entailed. To me, it sounded like we were gonna pay someone to do fundraising, you know, type thing, and so it was kind of a little bit confusing, but to do, like, three, like, designs or some options of what to do, um, in my own head, I'm sitting over thinking, "Oh, man, that would actually work out pretty well if you did that," you know? Um, so, I can see it, just when I, when I was reading it over, that's why I pulled it off, because, um, I couldn't quite, couldn't quite pick it up, and I definitely asked around a little bit first, you know, cause I don't like pulling consent i, agenda, items off. But this one actually has quite a bit of information on it that probably could have been on a business item, cause it's, it's, it's interesting to us, but, um, I get it and, um, look forward to seeing those, those designs.
No harm in pulling it off and it's, you know, that-
Yeah, just to understand it more, a hundred percent.
No harm at all, that's right, so.
I would only add that I think the word fundraising is what raised the eyebrows. It's like, you know, we're hiring someone to tell us how to do fundraising.
That's how I do it.
And I think, I think what it means actually is we're talking about sponsorship, and I think that's a completely different feel. I mean, fundraising, it's like, "What the heck?", so-
It's, it's, it's the elements and what they, what do these elements look like that could be-
Yeah, and that makes sense if it's bricks, yeah.
Potentially sponsored or sold, yes. All right, any further questions? You'd be voting on, uh, approval of amendment number seventeen to contract number zero six six dash two oh with Rice Fergus, Rice Fergus Miller. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none? The, uh, it passes. I, I heard your yea vote. All right, so, we are to our discussion item, and I see, uh, Shelley Heldur from Gordon Thomas Honeywell, sitting in the audience, and, uh, we'll bring her up there next to Mr. Bond. Mr. Bond, do you have a staff report for tonight?
No.
You want, oh, you're welcome to stick around. And Shelley is gonna walk us through ideas for our legislative agenda, um, and she'll probably, will probably bring back, I would hope sometime in October, for sure early November, uh, our, what our legislative agenda should be, uh, cause we'd like to have one adopted so that Shelley, when Shelley, when January first rolls around and the legislature's in session, that she's got her marching orders and what she's trying to solve for the city of Port Orchard. So, Shelley, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. It's good to be with you again this evening, um, to continue preparing the city for the 2026 state legislative session. Next slide. So, uh, my presentation tonight will cover five different areas. I'm gonna start by sharing a brief preview of the 2026 session. Uh, we'll review the purpose for a city and having a legislative program. I'll provide some context for, um, funding requests that are made to the state. We'll talk about the best practices when it comes to developing a legislative agenda, and then wrap up by talking about next steps. So, the 2026 session is the second year of the biennium. It's a sixty-day session. It is often referred to as a non-budget year since the legislature simply makes adjustments to the two-year budgets, and those adjustments are referred to as the supplemental budgets. Although there are nine legislative races on the November ballot, um, really only one of those races is truly competitive, it's the senate race here in the twenty-sixth. Um, but no matter the outcome of that race, um, Democrats still have a strong majority in, uh, both chambers. So, um, that majority will be retained heading into the 2026 session. Um, every bill that was introduced in 2025 that did not pass into law will still be, um, or will be automatically reintroduced in 2026 and available for consideration. In addition, legislators will be able to sponsor and introduce new bills. Following the 2026 session, there will be another campaign season, uh, the entire House and half of the Senate will be up for election. And so, traditionally, in short sessions, we don't see, uh, as many controversial policies advance, uh, just because legislators are mindful of their upcoming elections. There are three primary purposes to a city having a legislative program. The first is to secure funding for local projects. Um, in 2025, the city was successful in receiving, uh, the largest amount awarded to a municipality in the twenty-sixth legislative district. It was one million dollars for the Bay Street reconstruction project. Um, the average appropriation from that program where we received that award was six hundred and four thousand, so we were far above average. The second purpose of a legislative program is defense, and that's to protect both, uh, funding and policies that are beneficial to the city. In recent years, this has become much more, um, a, a much more robust part of the city's legislative program. In the 2025 session, we engaged in really strong defense to ensure that the city was exempted from, uh, statewide parking minimum mandates, and we defeated a proposal that would have really crippled the public works assistance account. Uh, the last purpose of a legislative program is offense, and that is to advance a change to the state law, uh, by working with stakeholders and legislators and introducing a bill and advocating, uh, through the process for its passage. Um, this, of course, is, is challenging, um, and in, and depending on the city's priorities, this may make sense, uh, to incorporate into a city's legislative agenda. So, I wanna provide a little bit more context and background on funding requests, uh, because one of my goals as the city's lobbyist is to ensure a consistent return on investment. Every resident in the state pays taxes, and those taxes are spent in accordance with the state budget. When we advocate for funding, uh, funding request for the city, we're advocating that the taxes that Port Orchard residents pay be invested back into their community and, and the projects that are important to them. So, I think that's why I, I wanna do a little bit deeper dive on the funding component. And some of this is going to be a little bit of review, but I wanna make sure that, um, we kinda level-set before discussing what the city wants to prioritize moving forward. So, the state has three budgets, the operating, the capital, and the transportation budget. They adopt these budgets every two years. The state's current budget cycle runs from July first, 2025, through June thirtieth, 2027. So, again, this 2026 year will be the supplemental budget year. Um, the state's budget process is already underway. It began with, uh, state agencies preparing their budget requests and submitting those to the governor's, um, team or the, the budget office known as the Office of Financial Management. Um, those were due on September fifteenth. From now until mid-December, the governor's office is reviewing those state agency requests and, and developing operating capital and transportation budgets. The governor's budgets are proposals. They serve as the starting place for legislative discussions. And then throughout the course of the legislative session, each chamber develops its own budget proposals. So, we end up seeing three different proposals for each of the three budgets. And then ultimately, ideally, a final version is, um, agreed upon by the legislature and it's delivered to the governor for his, um, signature veto or partial veto. The changes to the budget, um, in this case, it would be the supplemental budget, will take effect on July first, 2026. So, as a local government, um, there is opportunity to request funding from any of the state's budgets. The operating budget this coming year will be the most difficult to secure funding from because, um, we are expecting the state to have, uh, a budget shortfall. Um, and there's also the logistical challenge that any funding awarded from the capital budget or from the operating budget has to be spent within the specific fiscal year that it is awarded. Um, funding from the operating budget is administered by a state agency, and oftentimes they do take a small administrative fee. The capital budget is the more traditional source of funding for local governments. Uh, the local and community project list, or it's commonly referred to as the LCP, um, that's the state's version of earmarks. And this is the program where the city received the one million for the Bay Street project. Um, it, this, this list, the LCP, funds local governments and nonprofit projects throughout the state. Uh, budget writers tend to prioritize projects in this program that are coming, asking for the final dollar needed to finish the project. The average size of an award from the LCP, um, in the previous supplemental budget was two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, so really small awards in supplemental years. Um, larger awards, whether it's in a supplemental budget or a capital, a, a normal budget, um, goes to projects with regional, uh, regional impact, uh, or statewide significance, and they're often advanced by a coalition. For reference, the 2026 supplemental budget has three hundred and forty-nine million in bonding capacity. To compare, the state's biennial capital budget is seven billion, so three hundred and forty-nine million in bonding capacity is very small. The final budget, the transportation budget, it funds both a mix of operations and capital projects related to the state's transportation system. Um, the legislature continues to focus on its limited transportation resources on completing projects that have already been started. Um, and then any request that's made of the state's transportation system has to have a nexus with the, the states, or that's made of the state's transportation budget has to have a nexus with the state's transportation system. So, as, um, as the council considers what, uh, you should prioritize for the next year, I wanted to provide some guidance on best practices, uh, that improve your chances of successful outcomes. Um, first, legislators balance many different issues and interests throughout a session. Typically, over two thousand bills are introduced, and they only have so much bandwidth to advance interests for the city. And so, having a concise and focused agenda, uh, with three to five items allows them to lean in and really focus on the issues that, um, you want to see them get across the finish line. Uh, the second is to keep the city's agenda city-centric. Um, there are a lot of issues that are being considered in Olympia, and the city's ability to influence policy is greatest on those topics where the city has expertise or a role in implementation. We wouldn't like school districts telling us how to build roads, and so they probably wouldn't want a city telling them how to structure a school day, for an example, for example. And then finally, a strong legislative agenda is one that reflects an understanding of the process as well as the political and budget realities, um, that I just outlined. So, in considering the city's priorities for 2026, um, it's, it is always helpful to build on your, your past successes, um, and previous agendas. So, as a reminder, the city's legislative agenda has two sections. You have the legislative priorities, those are the top issues that the city wants to advance and, um, really play a proactive role in getting across the finish line. And then we have the other important topics section, and that outlines issues where, um, they have a direct impact on the city, but the city plans, and so the city would plan to weigh in in support or opposition if those policy discussions come up. So, on the screen here, this is for reference, these are the city's 2025 legislative priorities and other important topics. In 2025, uh, the Port Orchard Community Center was listed on the agenda. We, we did not request funding for the project. Um, we updated legislators on the progress, and we made note that a request would likely be needed in the future. Um, as was mentioned, we had a request for Bay Street, and we're successful in receiving a million dollars, um, so that, uh, would likely be an item that we would take off the agenda. Um, municipal water supply, this is something the city's still working towards, uh, state-approved water supply, um, and the, the work of the, the five pilot programs that were authorized in the foster decision has still not resulted in a permanent solution. As was mentioned earlier this evening, the Sedgwick roundabouts, um, that's something that's been on the city's legislative agenda. Because the, of the way the state funds transportation projects, there's really only opportunity to secure funding for projects of this size every five to eight years at best. Um, and so, it's really important to have an item that's the city's highest transportation priority on your agenda, even if you don't anticipate there to be a transportation package passed in the coming year. So, for example, in 2026, I would not predict that there is a transportation package, but would still recommend that the city have a transportation priority identified.
Shelley, if I could introduce, that item has been on our agenda at least a dozen, if not fifteen years, a, and, and as Shelley spoke to, it's every five, six years, a big transportation package gets put together with some sort of a funding mechanism, and the last package that the state put together were only for, um, large regional projects. There weren't any local projects in it. Two packages ago, uh, the, the time before that, uh, a package that didn't pass, our roundabouts were finally in that package. It just, the package overall didn't get support, enough support to get across the finish line. So, it's really important, um, that we have something, you know, whether it's that, those, continue on those roundabouts, cause I think they're very important to our city, but are the state's responsibility to continue to advocate, and Shelley's absolutely right, there's likely not going to be a transportation package, but we need to continue that conversation so when the next package comes along, our project's in that package and that we get funded.
On the bottom half of the screen there, you see the, um, other, the list, just the topics, not necessarily the, the statements of the other important topics. Those, um, statements guided, um, our advocacy in Olympia during the last legislative session. Those statements guided our advocacy in Olympia during the last legislative session. So I'm before you all this evening because this is the time of year to consider changes to the city's legislative agenda. And as a council, you set these priorities. And so tonight is about hearing from you and hearing what your preferences are. So to assist with your brainstorming, I've listed some potential projects for you to consider, or of course you can direct my efforts elsewhere. Some brainstormed projects could include retaining some of the priorities from the 2025 agenda, like the Sedgwick roundabouts. Or new ideas could be a, a capital budget funding request for the old Clifton Road Water Intertie project, a capital budget request for the Orchard Street Plaza, or perhaps something else. You could consider a smaller capital, smaller in size, capital budget request for 2026 in the supplemental year. Or you could consider a larger capital funding request in preparation for 2027. We could do both. But I want to set expectations about what is achievable, given the need for investments to be spread throughout the district, as well as the available bonding capacity in the supplemental.
I think it's important too, that Shelley pointed out there, we got the largest request last time. For us to get the largest request two years in a row probably isn't realistic. And Shelley, could you give us some back? I know you've been in conversation with our delegation and I think it, for us to be success, well, we might have priorities, but getting, picking a project that they can get behind too and can champion for us could be beneficial too. So did you, have you, I know you've had some conversations.
Yeah, yeah. So some of the feedback, initial feedback I've heard from the delegation is they would love to see something that helps address the city's water supply issues. And so immediately when I heard that, I thought, okay, the Water Intertie project sounds like a, a good candidate for that. More so than feedback on specific projects, I heard that there's a desire for there to be projects delivered in the near term. With full recognition that large projects take time, they would love to be able to see something be delivered, to be able to come in and be the last dollar in to finish something that's on the pathway towards success.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I was, we're at a point of taking questions or providing feedback, that's why I have my hand raised. So if we're at that point, I'll jump in.
I have a few more slides and I'm, then I'm, the floor is yours really. So if you would like to jump in now, you're welcome to, but I have.
I'll wait.
Okay.
Just had, there is a placeholder.
Okay, great. And then I just want to mention that for the other important topics portion of the legislative agenda, you can keep the same list that was there last year, or you can make changes to it, you can amend the language, add policies, remove them. Again, I want to emphasize that this is your legislative agenda. So as you consider what you would like to prioritize, I thought it would be helpful to share the priorities that the Association of Washington Cities is considering. They are also going through their process. Right now, the Legislative Priorities Committee has recommended four priorities for the board's consideration. The four priorities are enhancing indigent defense by increasing state support and funding, especially increasing the necessary workforce. The second is to improve the housing supply, specifically to help cities meet their goals for more housing affordability. Cities need the state to provide the time to implement recent legislation and to provide new tools to increase housing investments. The third is increased sustainability for local transportation preservation, maintenance, and operation needs. And the last priority is to preserve state shared revenues, which the reason I think this made it as a recommendation is given the budget outlook that the state is facing. State shared revenues are a common place that the state looks to, to help balance their budget.
If I, can we back up to that slide for a moment? The, the reason that that first one is there is because there were recent mandates from the state related to the caseloads of prosecutors and it doesn't impact us yet, but it will in the future and it's impacting many other cities across the state. And that's why it's one, one of AWC's top priorities is because that directly impacts city budgets.
So before, turn it over for discussion, here is where we are in the process and what comes next. As mentioned, I'm looking for your input and guidance on the development of the city's legislative agenda. Once the legislative agenda has been adopted, we will schedule briefings with the city's legislators to get them up to speed on the city's top priorities. And then the 2026 legislative session begins on January 12th. So that is the, the date on the horizon that we're looking towards. So that concludes my presentation and I look forward to the discussion and, and feedback.
If we go back to the slide of this year's, because that's probably a good place to start is looking at, what was, what were our, you, the last ones, the 2025 ones, are those still relevant and?
Uh, one more. One more.
Slide back.
Do we have to decide?
There you go.
Do we have to decide tonight? Can we, if we come up with another topic or something, could we, you know, email it to you or talk to you about it?
Sure. Over the next couple of, I mean, the idea is to get, you know, a general direction from you so that staff can prepare that agenda and bring it back to you, you know. October would be best, but for sure in November for you guys to adopt. So you don't have to make a decision tonight, but we'd sure like some direction and there's not, not going to hurt for you guys to, you know, provide some additional information. I, I know I want to talk to Scott and John also who aren't here. But Jay, you've been patient with your hand raised. Go ahead.
Uh, no, I just had a little bit of feedback. One, just to echo what's already been said is the, I know when we've talked with our legislators, it's about getting, doing what you say you're going to do. So getting projects completed on time. I know, Mayor, you know a city that's close by that returned money at one point in time that they had received and that did not sit well, I know, for future. Also, the echoing, what Shelley said about last dollar in is always great. I would like to see us stay consistent on our ask because it, keeping things in the forefront usually helps down the road. So you're not, we're not bouncing around with different projects. I know that we, we all have what if. My big one that I would like to see, which I think's, uh, continue to ask, is the one regarding transportation, our transportation initiatives and also our continued ask for state highways upgrades because that affects both our infrastructure and also the growth projections, which, supporting the growth projections, which the state is asking us to, you know, to do. So that's my two cents and thank you very much.
I think it's really relevant, while, someday we've got to get Foster solved and to have Shelley continue to push on our.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Push, push on that issue, I think is, is relevant to have on there. And from a capital, I think we should pick a capital project and her, you know, that old Clifton Intertie, it positively impacts our ratepayers because if we don't get an award from the state, we're, we're going to borrow money that we, that our ratepayers have to pay back. So I think we, we need to pick a capital project. You know, other things are, you know, a lot of it is defense. I know Nick would greatly appreciate us playing defense on housing mandates. I mean, he's, his team spent half of the year with all of the different housing mandates the legislature imposed on us. And I don't think that one size always fits all. We ought to have some local control in those issues and to play defense on, on, on that front is, is important too. So, Mark, you have some comments?
Well, yes. I'm following right along with you there. The, the Intertie, Shelley had listened in to you, the things you were saying, keep it local, keep it, keep it important to our community, that, that Water Intertie. A lot of the citizens don't quite understand how effective that will be to help the city, not only today, but into the future. I think that's a real big push. I would like to still continue to beat the drum on Sedgwick. They have to hear us eventually and hopefully do something about it. It's gone way too long, but if we don't keep beating that drum, it will get pushed off to the wayside. You know, I thought I had heard, Director Ryan, maybe you can help me, weren't we getting close on the Foster situation? So we heard, or is that taking a couple steps back?
Uh, our, our consultants are telling me that we're getting very close. I, I've spoke with them this week. So we've had our preliminary meeting with Department of Ecology. We've met our tribal partners. There's things that they like, there's things that they didn't like. So we are going to modify our draft mitigation plan and we're also talking to our neighbors in Bremerton because we need augmentation stations and so we have to have those partnerships. And then we also have meetings with West Sound because we need an augmentation station in West Sound's district as well because that's where. But we are, we are making progress. It's, it's, it's still happening.
Okay, good. So transportation for me, I'll echo Jay's comments, very important. Water, I think is important. And the third one for me, I'm following right along the lines with 2025 with the community center, the fundings that we received. I'd like to see some efforts towards Orchard Street Plaza so we can continue that momentum downtown and, and make that happen as well.
I think with the Orchard Street Plaza, if we have it on there, it's, it's, whether it's that or the community center or it's holistic with the two, whether we, we're talking about them jointly, but the, we won't need money, we aren't going to construction next year and on the community center, it's 2027. So I think we have another opportunity in, in our, that could be our big ask next year, but it won't hurt to have it on the agenda. Hey, remember, we're continuing to work on this community center and we're going to be at, back next year for, for a big ask on it.
That's my point.
Yeah, okay. Uh, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to just keep on echoing what everyone else said. That way, I guess it's almost unanimous, but the transportation piece is super important, but with our utility rates going the way they are, the last thing we want to do is borrow more money and if we can get some assistance on the Intertie, that'd be huge for, for that.
One item I see on our last year's topics, the, the police academy was a big deal and I think we've kind of gotten over that hump. I don't know that we need a local academy anymore, chief. What are your thoughts on that front?
I, I think at least at this point, we're probably over the hump. There are five academies in the state now, so we're able to get people in within two to four weeks.
Yeah, so, so we can probably take that item, you know. Growth Management Act for, reform, I, I think that's wishful thinking, whether we, what, I mean, what are thoughts? You know, so I'm hearing from the chief to take the, the law academy one off there. I, you know, that's.
Yeah.
Growth Management Act two, it's like, I, I don't see that with the Democratic majority in, you know, we're asking Shelley to do something that probably isn't realistic. What are you guys' thoughts on that?
Unfortunately, I would agree.
I'd, I'd still like to see some legislation, and I think you guys would too, on vacant building owners. It just doesn't exist and if that opportunities, you know, we aren't going to probably lead, be able to lead that charge, but if, if legislation comes, comes forward, then, then we definitely jump on that and, and work with others to make that, you know, make that happen. Opposing the, the mandates, the, you know, the top-down mandates, is everybody still pretty comfortable with still having that on our agenda? Horse transportation and, and infrastructure funding, the Public Horse Trust Fund is the, the primary tool for that and they swept a lot of those funds that last session and that's playing defense or getting those dollars replenished so that we have opportunities to get those low-interest loans that we've been the beneficiary of in the past. Other topics that you guys? I mean, we don't, we're not making, I'm just trying, we're trying to.
Keep it small.
Yeah, that's true. Shelley's going to be much more effective. I, I would always, we've always in the past too, had a bullet on there to, to support the legislative priorities that AWC brought forward and, and be, help them and those advocate on those four items that they had. Want to bring those back up? I think it's the next two slides, Brandy? The two slides down? Are we comfortable with being in support of those four items that they've? It's the indigent defense funding, it's so that our, our defense, our city's public defenders, we have more funding for those. Improving housing supply, that's state funding for housing supply. Transportation, which is one of, one of our priorities and then preserving our state, our shared revenues that, that we get currently from the state and not have, it's more of a playing defense on that. Okay, well, I think we got, I'll, I'll make sure we check in with John and Scott separately. Fred?
I have a couple of questions. Do you know if the vacant building legislation involves something like an unoccupied building tax? Are you familiar with that?
Yeah, I know that's what's been considered in the past, but this past session, there was no legislation actually introduced on that topic.
Don't we do that in our city if we want to implement that?
If we're allowed to, I guess.
Under state law, we can't. So that's, that's what Shelley's saying is there was no legislation proposed. Somebody, somebody in the legislature has to propose a bill and, and then if someone does, then we would get behind that bill and help advocate for it, for its passage. And so, and we've got that on our, our pri, our priorities list. Okay, so we'll work on, you know, there isn't any rush to this. I think maybe a month from now, we'll bring it back end of October for your guys' adoption. But if you've got additional thoughts or ideas, you know, don't hesitate to, to chip me an email and I'll get the information to Shelley. Okay, all right. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley.
All right. Safe drive home. All right, let's get to our council committees' reports. And the first is economic development, tourism.
Nope, we didn't meet.
Did not meet, okay. I was out last week, so I wasn't certain. Utilities?
Uh, no meeting, in October.
Okay. I know finance is working for a day, well, you guys met actually last week and you guys talked about the, the sewer rates. I believe you guys was, primary, it was last week.
Yeah, it was. We reviewed the sewer rate program, the priorities and had a very robust discussion on the rates themselves and, and how to best implement those. And we also talked about the potential of bringing on a couple more employees to help manage all of our new systems and maintain them correctly.
And was hence the data that came tonight and showing the backlog and TVing and, and other maintenance, yeah?
And, and a lot of that data came out in a new, Noah did a great job in putting together another slide for that presentation that we worked on at our brick study last week, but was also in the, in the packet tonight.
Transportation met this evening.
And usually I have time between meetings to kind of take my chicken scratch and make sense, sense out of it, but we talked about a couple of different things. Update-wise, anybody that's driven down Sydney Road in front of Sydney Glen knows that there's some work going on down there, updating, updating the sewer main. And fortunately, we were able to, the timing of it wasn't the greatest, but we were able to get the Sydney Glen entrance completed before school started. The city's hopefully looking for a, a November paving opportunity, as long as attempts and the weather holds out, to complete that project. We talked about the Anderson Hill Roundabout, which came before council tonight. We talked about Tremont Phase Two and Three, which basically is between the update improvement there, which basically is between Port Orchard Boulevard and Sydney Road. We had pretty extensive discussions on, on that and we had a presentation in regards to a survey that was done to, to our citizens about what their concerns are, what they'd like to see there, where they mainly would, would be routed. where they mainly would be routed, either as a pedestrian or bicyclist. More to come on that. Let's see. And then we also discussed our first shared street that I believe Mr. Bond said was probably one of the first in the state at this point, out in McCormick Woods. And what this is basically is, it's a walkable street that still allows automobiles on it as well, but the maximum speed limit on that walkable street is 10 miles an hour to help just bring the community together. I thought that was really, really a cool idea. It's something we've been talking about for a little bit. And actually, there's a new ordinance for shared streets coming, but the state's also talking about this at a higher level as well. So, then we had to wrap it up because we all had another meeting we needed to get to, but that's what we did in transportation tonight.
All right. How about land use?
No meeting.
There was no meeting?
No meeting.
No meeting, all right, thank you. Lodging tax, hasn't met, sewer advisor, anything to report there?
No, meeting in Novem, excuse me, in October to go over budget.
Anything to report on council, coffee with council?
Yeah, we did last time.
Yeah, we gave a report last time, and we also sent our notes to Brandy to disseminate to everybody.
Okay.
Those are distributed today.
Okay, fair enough. Mayor's report, I haven't gone on vacation last week, so I didn't, don't have anything for you guys. I would offer, though, based on Jerry's comments, Noah wasn't here this evening to give much of the data. Dennis was kind of pitch hitting there on the sewer rate stuff. Would it be, would you guys appreciate having another presentation of that before others' action on the sewer rate? What you guys last, you guys don't feel?
I've said twice.
Okay, all right.
I think what would be more effective is if we discuss putting a flyer in people's bills about the sewer rates, and I know we probably missed that boat. But something like that to get attention to people who aren't paying attention, rather than having a repeat of the presentation.
Okay, all right. I was just gonna offer that up, because, okay, it doesn't look like there's an appetite for that, so.
And put it back on the government page and just-
It's on our website. Currently, is it, Mr. Ryan?
It's on the package.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's more visible.
Yeah, so, okay, all right. That's all I was gonna offer, is to offer one more presentation of it. All right, I don't have anything else. Staff, department heads, Mr. Ryan, got anything to share?
Thank you, Mayor. A few updates. I do want to inform you and council that as part of the PFAS testing that the state requires our agencies to do, we did get a hit at our Well 9 site, and I'll explain those results. PFAS is also known as a forever chemical, if you're not familiar with that terminology. I'll be happy to provide additional information, but the state does have some action levels, and so this test, I'll read directly from the report we received, and it was just this one location, and this is the first one that Port Orchard has tested that's come up positive for the PFAS. So, the directed PFAS results compared to the state action levels, it's calculated by nanograms per liter, which is the same as parts per trillion. So, there is a detectable level that is at two. Our test came in at 3.67 nanograms per trillion. So, the current state action level is 10, so that 3.67 is quite below that. In 2029, that action level, which requires cleanup, will go down to four. So, we're still below that four. So, right now, we just have to continue with our quarterly testing for this as a follow-up. We've been very fortunate so far, and this is something that we're paying close attention to. So, just wanted to keep that update, and we will continue to keep you informed as we hear more. Also, want to make you aware that we do have some scheduled night work tomorrow night on 9/24/25. We're going to be doing an air vac, our contractor that's doing the Marina Pump Station, will be doing an air vac replacement, and this location is out in front of the Annapolis Transit. I did reach out to the building owner, and I left a message for the business owner. So, I did talk to the property owner only. We will start the work right when business is closing, so there shouldn't be any impacts. We'll continue to flag the vehicles. There also is going to be some upcoming night work out here on Bay Street near the apartments here that are going up. I don't have dates yet, we're still reviewing, but this is going to be PSE, so they don't impact the commuters. So, just those two traffic updates. And then last update is Bay Street demo. Still moving forward with the permit, getting promising news. I talked to them today for the HPA. They say that they're at the last review. We did meet with the contractor for pre-con last week. They are getting started with the asbestos remediation, so that part of the project is starting. So, we have some progress, and that is it. Thank you.
Didn't she say we were in the seven bay?
I specifically asked her, she said everything's accepted. It's a vague email, but I asked the question if we were complete and if we're in our seven-day waiting period, and she said yes. So, that's, but I don't have it in hand yet.
So, hopefully by our next council meeting in two weeks, we should have that, yeah, have a permit in our hands, I hope. Ms. Archer?
Thank you, council. Very briefly, I just wanted to address, we had public comment earlier this evening about RCW 4217A 555, which is a statute you've heard me cite before, which says, "Public agencies are prohibited from using facilities for endorsement of a candidate or a ballot proposition." And I've cited that before to interrupt public commenters. I don't think I've had to do that in recent memory here, but in the past, I've had to do that because if we were to allow an individual to utilize the microphone during a council meeting to endorse, to say, "Vote for X," then that is a PDC violation on the city because we did not prevent the use of our public facility. So, that statute is designed to prevent endorsements, meaning vote for this person utilizing a public facility. The commenter focused on the analysis of 4217A 555 as it relates to endorsements of other candidates in your individual capacity when using your job title. And I just want to clarify that it is not a violation of 4217A 555 to use your title when endorsing a candidate for public office. It's, I want to carve out, you absolutely cannot do it here in this building or from the dais in any way, using any of our microphones, but if you were in your individual capacity to be endorsing someone outside in the public, you could utilize your title in a portion of that endorsement. Your title is not considered government property, and it's your personal prerogative to utilize that title in an endorsement in your personal capacity. Again, not on public property, not using a public vehicle, not in a public setting, or in a public meeting. But that is the parameters that the PDC has set as far as their interpretation of 4217A 555. And in light of the comment, I just wanted to clarify that, since this is an issue involving both your personal liability and your liability as an agency. I'm happy to answer any questions on that. I know that's unusual for reports, but I'm happy to answer questions, either here or reach out to me after the meeting as well. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you for clarification. Yeah, appreciate that. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I just, excuse me, I just wanted to report out on the Sherman Avenue Stormwater Park open house that we held last Wednesday. We had decent turnout. I think we've had about 80 participants on online surveys, and we had 15 or so people show up to Wednesday's in-person workshop. The purpose of that workshop was to just vet our proposed three alternatives that we're going to compare. And so, it seemed like the alternatives that we've developed are in line with what the, what makes sense for looking at various alternatives. And so now our staff is going to proceed with developing the design concepts for each of those alternatives. And just for the city's council's knowledge, the alternatives are, the first one is a trails and conservation park, the second one is a family nature park, and the third alternative is a community garden and recreation park. And so, the first of those three is the most natural in its setting, and the third of those would be the most developed of the three alternatives in terms of the amount of improvements and alteration of the landscape. And so, we'll look forward to seeing those conceptual drawings in a few months, and then we'll be asking the community to weigh in on which alternatives they like most, and also which elements of each alternative they like as we hone in on a preferred alternative for the park. Thanks.
Keith?
I just briefly just want to thank the council and the mayor again. It's really important that we come in and do these public commissionings, and I know it takes up some of your time. It's kind of a long meeting, but I appreciate it, so thank you.
We like it, thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Wallace?
Yes, so at the work city, the council agreed to participate in sponsoring a tree downtown. And so, you should have received an email with your portion of the cost to do that. One of the questions that we had from the Bay Street Association is who is the main contact for that project amongst you council members? Councilmember Fenton, would you like to take the lead and work with the Bay Street Association on the tree decorating downtown?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. I'll submit your name to her, then.
Wait a minute, what did I say?
My second.
Wait, are one of these guys supposed to help me decorate the tree? Is that what you mean, or what?
That's for you to coordinate with them on.
Oh, okay, I'll do it. Hey, we got a good spot, too, guys. What was it, number 19?
19, I believe.
Yes. It's visible, so it's good.
Perfect. That's all I have.
Yep.
Okay. All right, we're to our citizen comment period. Jerry?
Put it down to my height. When Shelley was making her presentation-
So, Jerry, we all know you, but could you identify yourself?
Okay, my name is Jerry Harmon. I live here in Port Orchard. And when Shelley made her presentation, that's probably the very first time that anything that's been presented here was, that I've been at, was readable. And I'm just wondering why the font size can't be changed on all of the paperwork that you, you've got probably $50,000 worth of technical material here, and most of the people cannot read what you have up there. It's just a waste of our effort unless you're right in front of the TV. But even when I was sitting, I could read part of what was over here in her presentation, not all of it. When she had quite a bit there, then it got smaller on her presentation. But anything that you want to put up there, can't you just go copy and hit font size and enlarge it, and you can still have the regular font size for all of the stuff that you have in front of you? Because it just seems like I sit here and think, all of these TVs are, I'm going to call them TVs, they may have another technical name, these, it's a waste of time. Most of the people in the audience can't read anything that's up there because it's all on the regular font size that you use for a paper product. And it just seems like, it was nice to be able to read all that she had up there, and I could read it except for on this one when it got a little bit smaller. So, that's all I'm asking for the presentation to your audience. And also, I'm going to say, isn't there a checklist when you go into building anything for the city of everything you have to do on any project? And why a $37,000 decision is made here at this point in time in the whole presentation? It just seems like, I know that everybody likes the bricks up front for things they're donating to the city for the building here. But it just seems like it's an after effect. And on anything that you do, there should be, this is number one, two, three, there should be a checkoff list from the top to the bottom, and there shouldn't be these little things that pop up. And it might take a while to get it all in place, but it just seems like all of that should be discussed at the beginning, and there should be, just like she had there, this one has to be done by October, November, December. There should be dates set, and you're not almost ready to start the building, what, in January of this next year, isn't?
Two years.
Pardon?
2027.
Oh, okay.
Appreciate your feedback, Jerry.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
All right, anyone online wishing to address the council? I'm not seeing any, anything for the good of the order, council. Counselor?
I had a question for Dennis. I heard from someone, again, asking about the lack of pedestrian flags along Tremont and Pottery. Do you know if there's any progress that you can report on that?
I followed up yesterday with operations. Everything's been ordered, we're just awaiting for materials. And we have to fabric, we're also fabricating the holders for them.
Are the holders domestic, or are they imported, do you know?
I don't know.
I mean, is it gonna, okay.
I've seen a couple of different styles, so I'm not sure what they're doing.
Thank you. Thank you for the, Councilmember Rose Pepe?
Hi, thanks. Mark and I attended that meeting on the Stormwater Park that DCD put on, and it was very impressive. I know it will come to council eventually, but it's worth taking a look at the three alternatives. Secondly, Eric and I had some concerns with the patch done at Glen Eagle and McCormick Woods Drive. Public Works did a great job of putting up signage, warning the drivers and motorcyclists about the rough road, so much appreciated on that. And that's, and everybody else, have a great day.
Councilmember Trenery?
Yeah, I want to go back to the Stormwater Park meeting we had here in council chambers last week, and I need to give a shout-out to a young man who works for DCD. He's an Idaho vandal. His name's Connor. He put on a super cool, interactive, I don't know, what would you call that thing, Nick? You got it on your interactive poll, essentially, you logged on with your phone, and Nick did a great job presenting this information to us. And all the attendees had their phones out, and we were able to answer the questions that were on this poll, and the questions came right up onto the screen, or the, excuse me, the answers came right up onto the screen. We discussed those answers. We had, what, 15, 16 different questions. Everybody in the room was very excited and happy about the way that that meeting went. I really think Connor needs some kudos for putting that together, and I hope we use it in the city business movie world. Great program.
Anything else for the good of the order? Go ahead.
Oh, well, I would like to congratulate Eric Ward. He was voted Community Volunteer of the Year. So, the people voted for him, and it was through the best of regional voting kits app. So, congratulations there, Eric.
Nice job.
Thanks. Yeah, I had a kind of a cool situation. I was in, walking out of the grocery store at Safeway, and a little lady came up to me, asked me, "Are you on City Council?" And I said, "I am." And she said, "I was pulled over by a police officer, and he said I was going 10 miles an hour over it. I've never been pulled over in my life." And I started screaming at him, then I started crying, and he just took a step back. He said, she says, "He walked me down," basically walked me down, you know, I'm paraphrasing. She says, "But he was so kind to me. He didn't give me a ticket. He was just trying to encourage me to go slower." I told her I'd show that with you. They were pretty, they were pretty kind to her, because as she's telling me the story, you know, it was kind of how I said it, you know, she started getting all fired up, and then I had to calm myself back down, and he calmed me down, and so, I don't know who it was, but I'm sure it could have been any one of them out there, any one of them out there, so.
That's nice.
Doing good stuff, so thank you. Yeah.
Right, anything else?
Right.
We don't have an executive session, so our meeting is adjourned.